Start the meeting with a pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Start the zoning meeting with a roll call. Starting with Freeman.
Here.
Freeman Fuller, here. Howard Burman.
Here.
Neil MacGyver.
Here.
George Cushing.
Here.
Patrice Scott, here. All right, has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes of July 12? I have one minor correction on page three, the third bullet, second line. I believe it's supposed to read, learn to adapt to the various conditions which each season brings. You see that, Sharon?
Yep.
Oh, okay. And other than that, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes. Is this corrected?
So moved.
Second.
Alan Faver.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, we will be ready for the beginning of the public hearings of case number 103, 043, special exception. It's a request to allow conversion of an attached structure, a barn, into a one-two-bedroom multifamily unit at 20 Merrill Street in the multifamily zone. Okay, now open the public hearing. All right, this is Sharon. Would you like to come forward and present?
Yeah.
Just a description of what you'd like to do?
If you go to the podium, please stand.
This is the applicant, Sharon and Burman.
Basically, it's a two-unit building. It has two four-bedroom units in it. And we're just trying to turn the attached barn that's been there forever into a two-bedroom unit. So it'd be a three-unit building.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward. There's adequate parking there. There's actually officially nine parking spots there right now. There's only eight bedrooms, so we actually have more parking than we need.
Okay, you have nine parking spots with eight bedrooms right now?
Yeah.
And you are asking to increase it to two more bedrooms?
Yes.
So that would be 10 bedrooms?
Right.
And nine spots?
Well, officially, there's nine, and then there was a dumpster spot. We don't have a dumpster over there anymore, so...
Okay, so...
So one spot was the dumpster spot, so there's actually 10 spots.
Okay, so there are 10 spots.
Yeah.
And we'll have 10 tenants. And what happened to the dumpster? Where do you have the dumpster?
Well, we used to share it with other landlords, and they all got their own dumpsters. So we have a garbage shed over there that we pick up the trash twice, and we bring it to another dumpster.
Okay, so you have a garbage shed on the premises?
Yeah. It's actually attached to the back of the barn.
Okay. Okay. I have some contradictions on your application. I just wanted to see if it can clarify. Do you need a coffee?
Uh, yeah, I didn't bring one, so...
I think it's got all the attachment sharing. Okay. I wanted to ask about the second means of address. So right now, you have two units and an attached barn. And there's a stairway that goes through the barn?
Yes.
And is that, that's connected to the house?
Yes.
Okay, so that's...
So the plan is to put it, I think it's on the, one of the sketches there. The plan is to put a, yeah, on the front, as you see here. It's going to come out what is now a window from the second floor and come down, so...
Okay, is that going to be on the barn or on the, your second floor?
It's on the front of the house. So if you look at the house, it's like an L shape. This is like the part on Merrill Street. And this is where you have here, it's like, this is actually like a three-story part here. And this is two. So as you come out, or a window, you know, and see this is the top. So if you come out the window, it'd be a landing, so the stairs go down because it's a couple of porch here now. So we cut out part of the porch for this, which would actually make it safer because right now I've had files where people using that window to go out onto that roof. And, you know, there's a smoking area, but, you know, I don't have time to act, you know, for policy, so sometimes I do things I don't want them to do.
Well, I think that would definitely improve it.
Yeah. They would make it safer because, you know, if there ever was a fire in that place, and you know, the barn, there's no fire protection in the barn right now, per se. It's just a barn.
Right.
So if there was a fire, that could become impassable pretty quickly.
Right.
This would be an exterior staircase, so it would make it a lot safer.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions?
Those, the parking places, do those include the two that are in front of the barn? Are those in common?
That's officially one in front of the barn. And then there's eight, well, nine with the dumpster spot on that. I think the parking plan's on here, too. Somewhere.
It was approved in October of three?
Right, that one.
Well, that's, there's actually, I went through the file of the property today. It was interesting to see the agreements that have come to. So there was actually a document worked out between, I haven't, the bar minutes and attached...
So you have one spot here in front of the barn, and then along to...
It's a develop agreement.
And then along the fence, originally, the dumpster was here, and we moved it over here, but now the dumpster's not there at all. So you could potentially have seven there, eight, nine, ten.
And that's a point of that, too, right?
Yep.
And will there be, the stairway that you're talking about, that's going to come out of the new part, the barn?
Yeah.
That would be...
If you look at, actually, no, it would come out of there. This is, this is the old part, the barn's right here.
Right.
So the stairs actually come out here and go down here, the existing walkway right here. So we come out this part and go down, so then we have the existing walkway.
Okay, so that would work for, to get out of the original part?
Right.
And now what about the barn apartment?
The barn, the stairwell that's currently in the barn would still go down.
Okay, so, but it's interior?
Yes.
All right.
But it's a two-bedroom apartment, so the second means of address would be, they have EGRs windows in the bedrooms, but you're not required to have a stairway out of the second floor of a two-story apartment.
Okay. But this is the part I'm confused about. It's not two stories, your barn isn't two stories?
The barn is two stories.
And the bedrooms are going to be on top?
Yes.
And so what if there's a fire?
Well, they have windows. I mean, we have a lot of apartments that are two stories, and a lot of them have a stairway out of the second floor. And all the bedrooms are earlier than the second floor.
Okay, so are there, do you have ladders or...
Well, you have EGRs windows, so you, you know, if there was ever a fire, they could get up, you know? And that's, that's the...
I mean, it sets a...
It must a fire code.
It's a fire chief.
As long as, as long as they can reach the windows with a, you know, ladder or fire apparatus, then, you know...
Okay.
What are you going to use? It'll be up to all the firefighters.
Yeah. What are you going to use the first floor for?
The first floor would be just a kitchen and a living room, living room. You know, just one big whole...
So it's all part of the same unit?
Yeah. The barn, so the first floor of the barn would be the living quarters. So it'd be open concept, living room, kitchen, or the bathroom, and then the second floor would be two bedrooms.
That's right. Okay.
And then the other question I had was, do you know approximately how, you mentioned in here 700 square feet. Is that of the top of the barn or for both bedrooms or each bedroom? That's...
I think that's the total square footage of the barn.
700 square feet? Okay. So that would be upstairs, the barn would need two bedrooms?
Yes. This is it. Right, so if you look here, this is the second floor of the barn. So the stairs would come up, you know, up here, and then you got a hallway, and then there's a bedroom here with the door in and the closet. And then this, this part is actually above the stairs, and then the second bedroom. And then on the first floor, of course, I just dropped all this. Now, here's the first floor. So here's the stairs for the landing, two steps down into the common area. These are the stairs going up to the bedrooms. The bathroom's over here, shower, toilet, bed, and then the kitchen's in this corner. All right?
Okay.
So basically, just be an open concept.
All right, did anyone have any other questions for Mr. Burman? Do you know how old the building is? I wonder if it's a...
Turned a century or so. Yeah, it's a little farmhouse, so 1900s, I would guess. When we bought it, it was by a Beta fraternity house, and we quickly got them out of there because they were not nice to the building. This summer, we went through and spent a lot of money fixing the apartments and, you know, bringing them back up to where they should be. We're going to keep it that way. They got, last year, they got a little out of hand in there. It was not a good group of tenants, and the police visited them several times. I went over there, because I go around every weekend and look for parties and, you know, problems. And if I see them, I stop them, but, you know, you can only do so much, and these guys were definitely, near the end of the school year, like when they knew I didn't have enough time to throw them out, that's when they just went.
Right.
You know, did a lot of damage and, you know...
Have you found any methods of, through your lease, of cracking down on them?
Yeah, I mean, there's fines incorporated in the lease. I mean, the most effective thing, honestly, is what the town, the police do now. You know, first, first offense can be $350 fine. Second one, adults. I mean, if that doesn't stop a firm party, nothing will. And these guys did get a fine, but they didn't stop them, so...
Right.
You know, but, you know, it's a different group in there now, and I think a much better group.
All right, well, thank you, Sharon. Anybody, any other questions about your layout or intention? Sure?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. So... All right, I just have a question about this property, this kind of property for our planner to explain. I just recently, I noticed that the definition of student residence hasn't, it's been stricken from the zoning ordinance. And I just wondered how, how do you characterize buildings that we know are basically strictly
a multiple dwelling unit? It's kind of a mouthful, and it's, I probably have made several errors referring to it because it just, it doesn't flow naturally. But it's, it's all about multiple dwellings by unit. And as you know, a unit, you know, it's not, I don't know if my grandfather, excuse me, can only have three unrelated, and there can only be three to six units together. That's the definition, the maximum, the minimum, to be categorized as a multiple dwelling unit. Not the minimum, but where the special exception comes in would be, would be three to six. So it's just, yeah. We had, we had too many definitions out there.
Right, and that's where I'm wondering, crazy, two-family home be considered? That could, you know, what's multiple?
No, two-family, two-family home, well, according to the, on the table, excuse me, I don't know where to reach, here.
Yeah.
That's the table, so it's still there. So two-family home is what used to be a duplex, which would only basically be two units.
Right, and it had to be owned or occupied. But what about, see, the student residence is not here anymore. So that's what I was curious about, just how did it differ? Because when we read the definition, it talked about limited kitchen facilities and that sort of...
It was that kind of, yeah.
It's not a full...
It was more like rooming house. It was just, it was antiquated. I think if I recall correctly, it was originally, way back, created, oh, sort of under the auspices if you had a nursing school or something.
Right, but basically like a dorm.
Right. I mean, and not, not overseen by the industry, per se.
The only reason I was interested in inquiring was because I noticed it wasn't allowed in the multifamily residential zone. And so it's curious to me, just the definition of some of the things that we have in, I'm sorry, what wasn't allowed in the multifamily? A student residence. Oh. And the description of it was very similar to basically what we know we have in existence. And I know we've had, I mean, it's a problem because of previous, you know, non-conforming structures that exist because of the zoning, the way it developed over the years.
Right, right.
But I just wanted, to me, I just want to make sure we're calling it, you know, a fish, a fish, and not a foul.
Yeah.
But we've got the right tag on this kind of project.
So what's it called?
So it's a multiple unit dwelling of what, if we grant the special exception, this will become a multiple dwelling unit of three to six.
Well, two at this point, because...
Well, he has two units, right, in the main building, and then he's asking for a third. That's why we're being...
Two bedrooms. But overall, three, yes.
Right, but the whole development will have three.
Yes.
Right? But I just wanted to make sure that...
Except that's pre-existing, but, but in terms of a count...
Two, right, two are pre-existing, right? And that's why he needs a special exception to make a third unit, because his prior structure, it's a non-conforming structure.
That, and also...
Lot size?
Yeah, due to lot size.
Lot size is, is why it varies.
That's a variance, we could do that.
Right, that's for the variance part.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just trying to see that far away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's just... Right, it's, except for Village Commercial, it requires, that kind of configuration requires a special exception pretty much across the board, except single-family where it's not permitted because it's a single family. But, you know, this is a multifamily residential by zoning, so I guess the wisdom was at the time, and probably wisely so, is to look at any request for multiple unit dwellings on a case-by-case basis. So that's why the special exception is required. I'm just trying to see. Dwelling, dwelling unit, accessory family, single family. Dwelling, okay, it's on, is there, I probably don't have your zoning.
I have, I have.
Yeah, I have mine. The definition on page six of the zoning ordinance, dwelling, two-family dwelling, single-family dwelling, accessory family, and dwelling multiple unit. A residential building designed for or occupied by three to six families is per unit, with the number of families in residence not exceeding the number of dwelling units provided. So there's, it's, it's a subset, if you will, three to six dwelling. As I said, it pretty much requires a special exception in almost every zone.
Now, I would like to point out, too, that that particular area is now multifamilies, mostly student rental. All of my buyers are, you know, Skunk, Lane. The unit right behind me was recently converted to a two-unit student rental. To my, you know, the only part of it's not student rental is from the state itself. So it's a, it's a pretty concentrated student housing area.
Right. Pardon?
Sharon.
Sure.
How many are in that complex right now? How many people?
Yeah.
There's eight, there are eight students. There's eight students in that complex. And that's the max, right? Yes. So you're asking to increase it back to 100?
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Sharon, he's not limited to two if he puts in, he can put three people in there if he wants. Correct?
He can, but I don't think that the, the physical size of the building is going to let it work.
Yeah. No, as a rule, when we rent, we don't double up any bedrooms in any of our rentals.
Okay.
I mean, you can't stop someone from moving their girlfriend in or something, but, you know.
Till you catch her.
We don't, we don't put them on lease, and we don't know about it.
Right.
So that would be, of course, you know, if, let's say if it were the building itself large enough to accommodate another bedroom or something, after the fact, after this were theoretically granted, that you'd have to get a building permit, and that triggers the whole oversight thing once again, the, the building permit part keeps, keeps the applicant honest, even if they were to begin with, and kind of enforces the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Are we ready to go through the criteria for special exception?
Now, Sharon, if I could just, I, I have something new and exciting. I hope you'll think so. Obviously, the checklist is on the planner report. Use this if you like or don't use it. I had used this in Alton, and it worked pretty well. These are worksheets, which have all the same thing, yea or nay, but it gives you a chance to write out your reasons a little better. And just additional paper, and then you can circle it. Then, when the meeting's over, it can come back to me as a public, you know, part of the public record in case there's any confusion. So I know it's new and unfamiliar, but if, oh, there's yours, Howard. It might work a little bit better, or in conjunction with what's on the planner report criteria. Before I go on with this, Sharon, we thank you for doing that. I noticed in the file, previous zoning boards had passed in your...
Yeah.
...worksheets, which I think is a, is a nice thing to have for a public record. But I failed to ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak forward for or in opposition to this special exception. I don't seem to know a Butters, no one of the Butters here. But I just wanted to note that for the record, people within the opportunity to speak, and nobody is here to speak for or against. Okay, then, close the public hearing part.
I just wanted to, Sharon had mentioned that that area has a lot of multi-human dwellings, and it is, it's a very highly concentrated area, very saturated. When I came down tonight, I just took a quick look. There were within five or six buildings, I counted all 50 cars, in just that one area. So I often wonder what the maximum saturation point is, but I just wanted to bring that out.
Okay.
And it is a corner lot, so it's only in this section.
All right.
And I did, I took a drive through, and I noticed there are several houses on Bailey, I believe, it's not, you know, and you're kind of on the cusp.
Three residences.
A neighborhood that has some residential and some multifamily. So that, it's kind of important, I think.
It pretty much starts all the way from Main Street up through.
What starts?
It pretty much starts the saturation from Main Street all the way up through.
Oh, you mean as far as the multifamily?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe it's a sign of a lot of college, the college buildings are there, and then...
There's four residential properties on that street.
Four? Oh, on Bailey?
Yes. One percent.
Yeah. But if you, if you look at your map, you see where your zoning delineations are, and Bailey is totally, the street itself totally within the multifamily zone, so, at least on the lower, the northern side.
Yeah.
Okay, well, are we ready to go through the, or do you want to discuss anything? Is there anything else?
Yeah, I would like to bring up that, that it is a corner peak, that it is a corner lot. There is a hill crest just beyond it about 70 feet. That intersection is extremely busy. We have the Bailey and Merrill Street intersection. We also have the Langdon and Merrill Street intersection. This building also sits extremely close to the sidewalk. One aspect of it's almost on top of the sidewalk.
I would like to point out that I maintain, is the maintenance, took care of maintenance on the property on Bailey Avenue for 25 years. I've never seen an accident on that corner. And because it is on a hill, it does have good sighting in both directions when you pull out of the driveway from Bailey Avenue.
Okay. Do you want to look at our worksheet here? I think we should make some findings of that before. Is this how, is this not, okay. Why don't we work through the worksheet, and we can make findings? Let's see, criteria accepted, it's applied, it's been accepted according to the town...
Oh, sorry, that's, that's a typo. It's, sorry, I'll fix it. Or I got it, sorry.
The specific site is or is not appropriate location for the use. What do people think about that?
I think it's an appropriate location for the use.
You think it is an appropriate?
Yeah. It is appropriate.
Neil.
I think it is, given the character of the neighborhood, the fact that there's nobody here to object to it, and there is a house for sale in that neighborhood. The next one down is being marketed as a possible multifamily.
Which one is that?
It's the third one we're working on. Been doing it before.
Okay, how about Freeman? What do you think?
I would say it is, considering the area as it is now.
Okay. Which?
It is.
Okay. I'm going to say it's not, because I feel it's adding more bodies to a very concentrated area. Let's see. The actual evidence is or is not found that the property values in the district will be reduced due to incompatible uses. We don't, I don't think we have any evidence of that, one way or the other. We have a house for sale. I know one of the recent purchases was made there to convert to a student residence nearby in the neighborhood. But I don't think we have any...
And that property's only been improved by the purchase sale of it.
By the, I'm sorry?
By the sale. In the conversion. It's a pretty dilapidated piece of property.
Oh, it's been improved?
Yes, the property behind, current, the applicant's property.
Mm-hmm. Okay, but we, we haven't heard any testimony on that. So how about the next, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to use this worksheet, but there is or is no valid objection from a Butters. We have nothing from a Butters. Okay. And, well, I think when we make our findings, we should put out the numbers of student rules. Nuisance, what about that factor? There is or is no undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicle, vehicular traffic, including relocation, design of accessways, and all street parking.
I think there's adequate sidewalks there on both sides of the buildings, both on the current, on the corner there. The sidewalk runs down Bailey Avenue to the end of it, and continues on Merrill Street past Influenza Crest Building, Bailey Avenue intersection.
Yeah. Got anybody else on that?
I think it will add, will add to a situation that's there. I travel that street sometimes, three to four times a day. I think that we're possibly adding more vehicles to the area. It's going to create a problem. I know we've mentioned good visibility off that hill, but when they park on both sides, it's limited. So I do believe that there will become a problem, or add to a problem that's already there.
I did notice in the file that previously, I mean, the side, the driveway that's there had a variance approved years ago because it was too close to the intersection, they have to have a variance. But there was no other place to put it. So that was, you know, it is a concern on a corner.
So, that was, you know, it is a concern on a corner, having cars that close to an intersection, but it was allowed, so. Facilities, adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities will or will not be provided?
Well.
We didn't notice, but in the application, Sharon, they did have water.
There's two waters right there.
And there is, on sewage, there is.
Is.
Yeah, there is, so that's not a problem. An intent, proposed, proposed use or structure is, it was not consistent with the spirit of ordinance and the intent of the master plan. Okay.
They're going to approve the egress and egress of the building.
Yep, that, why don't we make some findings of fact now, based on this discussion? Okay. Property is located on the corner of Bailey and Merrill. What else?
Yes, adequate parking.
Adequate parking exists?
The removal of the roof will make the property less, make it quieter in the neighborhood and safe for the rest tenants.
Okay, removal of roof will improve.
Safety of tenants and reduce noise and nuisance in the neighborhood.
Okay, and what do we want to call it though? Egress, the new.
Egress and egress.
Yeah, egress. Will improve safety of, safety of tenants.
They're not expanding footprint.
Right, project does not expand, expand footprint.
Will increase, will increase numbers to.
Yeah, I would say current, current structure is non-conforming. Structure of two units with total of eight bedrooms. Close, will, will add two bedrooms. Madam Chair, I just, I think it's, might be good to note that it's legal non-conforming. I mean, it's not in violation because it predates the zoning. If we're going to mention non-conforming, just for the record. Current structure is.
Legal.
Well, yeah, legal non-conforming, I mean, that's a question that I have to, how does that, how is that determined? Because I looked through the file and it's not clear exactly when this house, which used to belong to one person.
Right.
But it, but it did.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it morphed before the particulars from the fraternity into what it is now.
It was rented before they went to, three students were dwelling in it.
It was, right, see, that's what I'm saying, how do we know that? That's what I'm just asking, how do we know that?
I know that, I took care of that other building for twenty-five years.
So, you know that it was rented out to students before, do you, I mean.
I'd say students lived there back in, let's see, nineteen seventy-three, they were in it, students were in it in seventy-three.
I have a feeling it was in the sixth, in the seventies. So, I'm just curious, how do we determine that?
We don't? I mean, I guess, I mean, not for the purposes.
So, the fact that it's divided into two sections, it's not our concern, but the third one. And granting a special exception will put it, the property basically in the purview of the code enforcement officer and the fire chief. So, I guess that's a good thing. Okay, so, current structure is a legal, non-conforming structure of two units with a total of eight bedrooms, proposal will add two bedrooms.
And you should be additional, add an additional dwelling unit with two bedrooms.
Will add an additional dwelling unit of two bedrooms.
They have existing unutilized space.
Okay, existing. Space?
Existing spaces used for inappropriate tenant use.
Well, what do you mean by that? I mean, but they're burning?
They have parties in the barn.
Oh, in the barn.
We sealed it off, they can't get in there anymore.
I don't think so. So, we have existing unutilized space. I wanted to say we have no, no butters objected. I received no correspondence from anyone other promo con, or other correspondence.
Fire, police, highway and building department heads all concur that no impact would result from the granting of the special exception.
Okay, public safety officials.
That's the day.
See, no, no adverse impact. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I know Sheridan only, only does so many kits per unit, but has this, if this thing is granted, and this is added, how many people leave, would there be allowed in that building?
He said ten.
Ten, ten.
He said ten. Well, it'd be so.
You could put an extra person in.
You could, certainly could have left. In that one unit. It's three unrelated. Okay, but the new unit would fall under the three unrelated.
So, you're at your max in the other units?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Units.
Right, and we can put that on as a condition of approval, the limit to what was represented.
Well, we can, I mean, it's implicit, he can, let's, again, even if the space were there, and not going to Sheridan, but anyone, I mean, he's above the maximum limit for the present zoning now with four in each of the previous units, but we're putting that aside. He has the option to go with three unrelated in this new unit, but he doesn't have the space.
Right.
But he has the legal right to do it. So, if he were to go and cram four in there, then he'd be in violation and then he'd be in trouble. But he's not going to because he didn't enroll. And if you catch people in there that are living there without being on the lease, that's not too kosher either, so.
Yeah.
It's sort of self, self releasing, yeah.
Okay, I think we should, we'll just look at the conditions. If it's approved, we can work on that, okay? So, why don't we work through our criteria unless somebody has anything else to add? Any, any facts that we want to put in there? Okay, number one, the proposed use shall be only goes allow the ordinance by special exception.
True. True, true.
True, okay, and I will list table of uses, section three or four, page fifteen is the authority for that. Number two, the specific site is an appropriate location and of adequate size for use. True?
False. True, true.
I'm going to say false.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
You said true. We have two falses and three trues. Number three, the use is developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True. True, true. True.
Okay, I'm going to say false. Okay, four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True, true, true. False.
I will say false. Number five, the use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities.
True, true, true.
It's a tough one, because it depends on what kind of tenants. True.
True, I agree, it all depends on the, whether it's going to be increased town services as far as policing. But I would say adding just two students will not do that, so I say true. Six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True, true, true.
False, I do feel adding more traffic to the area creates a problem. And I do feel that there comes a point when something's oversaturated. Bailey Avenue was originally only had, was all residential. We've done road improvements to that area, we've done very little modification to handle the additional size, and I believe just adding more kind of create a problem.
Bailey has not always been residential. Matt Gaves. Yeah, but it's always been apartment building.
It's been apartment, okay. I was getting corrected, I lived in that apartment.
Okay, I vote false also, feeling just, there's too many concentration of students in one area, I just don't want to see things expanded. So, all right, so I would entertain a motion based on our criteria. Do you want to offer a motion?
I would approve the application for a special exception.
Our second thought?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so three in favor. The motion carries. So, now we could look at the application, the imposition of conditions. Anybody like to offer anything? I think I'd just like to note, thank Sheridan for your efforts in improving the property and cooperating in the past with the town on making things as safe and objectionable to the neighborhood as possible. The only thing I would like to add, to say, and I appreciate your honesty and openness with the board as far as the number of tenants that you have, and you like to limit that. And I wish everybody else would do the same and, and hope that, you know, in the future, I mean, for this building to have eight students and to do a good job at that, that's, that's a good thing. And you now have ten students in your care. So, I would just like to put a condition in here that any further expansion would have to come before the board, any additional tenants, that the special exception is related to approval of the third unit with two bedrooms. Yes, yeah, that's clear. And we also note that, once you get the building permit applied, then the code enforcement officer and public officials will have to, will have their say in what they need to meet requirements there. So, anybody have anything else to offer, other than the normal conditions we put that everything, any further changes need to be, come before the board?
I think it's covered.
Yep, okay, well, that's the special exception granted. Now, we move into the variance, discussion of variance for the property. Because it's located on point eighteen acres, it requires a boardroom. Okay, we already explained that the property has two multiple dwelling units of four bedrooms each, we just granted a special exception for an additional two bedrooms in the third unit. Okay, Sharon, would you like to say anything?
Well, this is a valid request. Once again, it's somewhat of a technicality, because you can't grant a special exception without having the other half, if there's a variance needed. But my overriding thought was the fact that the footprint's not changing. The, actually, the, any purview surface or anything for parking is not changing, because the area was already cleared and set out. There's actually nothing changing, but the variance is a technicality that's required, because the lot, you know, because this is an older property that's been developed several decades ago, apparently, for this purpose, covers the lot quite significantly and does not satisfy the new requirements, which is about a little over forty-six hundred square feet of original lot size for this number of units. So, without saying that you really should grant it, because you just granted it, it's sort of hand in glove, this really is just a technicality and there's no overt impact that's changing anything in terms of how the building sits, or the density, or any, any impacts that would be affected by a substandard lot size.
Okay, so, the bottom line is, under our zoning limits, minimum lot size for multi-unit dwellings is forty-six thousand sixty square feet. And this is on point eighteen, it's about seventy-eight hundred square feet, approximately. So, it's quite smaller. Okay, that's, all right, so, to me, that's, that's really my concern, is just that a lot of people in a small area. Does anybody have anything to say before we go into our, into the discussion?
I think that barn was probably constructed at a time when people were using horse and buggy. They kept their horses in there and it has no use now, but it could become a nuisance or hazard, and I think that his proposal is an improvement of the property.
Donut butts the college property, right?
Correct.
Yeah, Sheridan, could I ask, what are you going to do as far as improving, I mean, I have an old attached barn to my house too, and they were built differently.
Yeah.
So, they weren't built for residential use.
Yeah, structurally, we're going to obviously make sure there's no problems with ride sills or anything like that. Bring it up top of the coves. There'll be a window put in the front and the back for the two bedrooms.
What about the floor, is it on the ground?
Yeah, well, it's got a poured concrete floor, because that was a frat house, that looked like their barn. So, yeah, it's got, but we're going to probably build a floor above that, because it's really high ceiling. So, we'll build, you know, a floor so we can run plumbing and, you know, the things underneath. We're also going to side the whole building once we're done.
Insulation?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to put, you know, the styrofoam insulation on it, so it's better insulated. We want to replace the old oil furnace with a new high efficiency gas furnace. It's probably an electric one, you know, because the boiler we got now might be big enough to heat the whole building, but if we're going to do it, we want to do it right.
There's definitely a lot better heaters out there today, more efficient.
Is that tree that had all the shoes in it gone?
The one I found, yeah, that was an old tamarack.
I think when they did the sidewalks, or they took that out.
Yeah, it's absolutely, yeah, that was actually a town property.
Okay, anyone have any other questions for Sheridan or discussion points? All right, why don't we go through our variances? Alright, why don't we go through our variants, considerations. Number one, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Do you want the rub sheet, or is this just?
I'll on, or are you good without it?
I think, what does the board like to do, I think, should be?
I don't need it.
Okay, no, that's fine. This one.
That's alright.
Would you like to make findings a fact? Or stick to what we had? Okay, the only thing I would say for the finding is that it's the minimum lot size is forty-six thousand sixty square feet for three units, and this is on a substandard lot. But the finding would be footprint's changing.
Yeah, the other one I'd like to comment is, one of the, the site that he will be doing his construction on, aboard is the college. So that's the college property there. I think that's important, because they're protesting.
Right. And again, no butters came to speak for or against?
He's upgrading the property and improving access and safety.
Okay, upgrading property to improve access and safety.
To the tenants, safety for the tenants.
Okay. Number one, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties.
True. I'll say true. True, true.
I'll say false. Number two, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
True. I'll say true. True, true.
I'm going to say false, just because, one of the purposes of our, the reasons our regulations were designed to prevent the overcrowding of land, and to avoid undue concentration of population. That's what expansion of these uses does that. Okay, number three, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that, A, the zoning restriction is applied to the applicant's property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property in its environment?
True. I'll say true. True. True.
Okay, I'll say false. B, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property.
I'll say true.
I'll say true. True. True.
I'll say false. State's purposes that it, are daring, that this violates. So, number C, the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others.
True. True. True.
True. Okay, I'll say true. There's nobody here to object. Number four, granting the variance would do substantial justice.
True. 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 True.
I say false. And five, the use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
False. Say true. True. True.
I'll say false. Okay, I would entertain a motion on the variance.
I make a motion to approve the variance as presented.
Second? Freeman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same age. Okay, Aaron's granted.
Working on it.
Okay, if you have anything else, you have to finish, Aaron.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and good luck.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Alright, let's see. Now, we will open a public hearing on case number 212-033, special exception. Request for special exception at 584B, Tenny Mountain Highway, for a two-by-eight commercial roof sign in the industrial commercial development zone. The sign is allowed by special exception, Article Four, Section 408.04. And we'll now open our public hearing. Sharon, would you like to come forward? Just let the board know what you're asking, we have your paperwork in front of us.
Okay, good. I have, Don has created the sign for our new business location, located next to the Flowersmith, and Peggy Smith, who owns the Flowersmith, and Mount Piero Holdings, who own the building, approves of our new sign. I just wanted to show you that what you have, what I present with you in the application, there's a visual aid for you on the last page. Does anyone want to get one of these? That was a sketch, but I do have a picture of the finished sign.
Sharon?
That looks great. Your application was nicely done, thank you. Didn't have to babysit the application, appreciate that.
I was the secretary for nine years.
Oh, so you know the pain.
Executive secretary? And then I've been a business owner for McDonald for twenty-three years.
So you're moving from your, from our residence?
That we were there for twenty-three years. And it became very close, and it was very adequate for the years that we were there. And in August, we received a call from Sherry Smith, saying that the place was available, and would we like to rent it, and we said yes. And we signed our lease on August seventeenth.
You sell your house?
No, no, we live in the house.
You still live in your house?
Oh, yeah.
Hawthorne?
Ten Hawthorne Street, that's correct. That is part of our mailing address. I mean, we're, we do, we have two locations for Hundler Red Studio, so we have a, just like mailing address for Ten Hawthorne Street, and then we also have the 584 Tenny Mountain Highway address also. And I've checked it out with the post office, and they said that was fine.
Do you do a lot in business via the internet today?
I do, Kevin. We have a website, and we also do wholesale. And that's also listed in the lease, saying that we do, our dial teaches art book, does art lessons, we do retail and wholesale accounts. And we've been doing that, too, since nineteen eighty-nine.
One technical question I had about the roof sign, is how, how does it stay on? I'm gonna paint it in some way.
Well, it fastens it, is it from, with brackets?
It will have, yes, I've discussed this. Randy Latulip is gonna be our carpenter, who is going to attach the sign to the roof. And he has explained to me that he has seen these bracket things at Rand's Hardware. I think they're in the plumbing section or something, but they have like holes in them. They're four foot long, and they will go, I don't know how many times, you know, across, because it's eight feet, so maybe three, maybe there'll be three things. And then somehow, he's gonna figure out the bracket thing to be attached to the sign and to the metal structure on the roof. And then there'll be a space underneath the roof, so that for drain there to snow and what, you know, whatever.
Great, great.
This shows the, the more of a schematic.
Great, I'm just wondering, Peggy, have you ever had any problem with your sign flying off or anything? I know, your signs can be really expensive, I hate to see so many useless.
My sign's been on the highway for twenty-two years. Same sign.
Okay, good.
Same brackets, that were on there on different buildings.
Okay, that's good to know. Alright, does anyone have any questions? Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I think the sign looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to make findings a fact?
I don't think it's appropriate for the location.
There's another sign. Oh geez, I'm sorry, let's stop. I need to ask Peggy, would you like to speak for or against, you support?
They've been very gracious about everything that they have done, coming into the building and doing improvements, and I've had no surprises. We know what's going on before, anybody else knows, and I think it's a great improvement. Now, I need to paint my sign.
Spearbrush.
I can't, I can't, I don't think it'll look bad. So, yes, we approve of it.
Great, alright, thank you.
I think you should paint your sign.
I think it's gonna happen.
That's great, okay, thank you. Now close the public. So, we have findings a fact, appropriate location, we have an approving of butter, a butter with similar roof sign.
Nobody here to speak against it.
No objections?
It's in the proper zone.
Proper zone for commercial.
Very attractive sign.
Very attractive. Sorry. Will be installed, like carpenter, licensed, is he contractor?
Randy Latulip, yes.
Or contractor?
He's there carpentry, it's Randy Latulip Carpentry. He did our roof on our house, our nice metal roof.
Will be installed by?
Rapidly, yeah.
Rapidly, yeah. I don't know if they have anything on it.
I had him as a student, now I'm interested. Had him as a student, now I'm interested.
Okay, anything else?
It really is a valid approach to advertising, because they are the, yeah.
Okay, so, so it's not excessive.
Highway grade is higher than?
Yeah, right. Appropriate, appropriate roof sign, let's see, appropriate location on roof due to?
Lower grade.
Lower grade. Building, okay. That's a good point to make. And anything else that we should include?
I don't think it will detract from any of the other businesses.
Okay, so, so anything, anybody have anything else to add? We'll go through our?
It's not gonna obstruct any view.
Okay, good.
Remember the tenants and the apartments.
What was that, Tom?
Remember the tenants and the apartment.
I think it's lower.
No, I think it's fine. No, I'm not kidding, I'm kidding.
I'll obstruct you. I guess we should put, sign will be, the size, two, is it two?
Two-by-eight.
Two-by-eight. Well, sign will be two-by-eight. Okay. Alright, that's it. Let's go through our criteria, number one, the proposed use shall be only those allowed in buildings by special exception.
True, 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 true.
True, okay, unanimous. I would just cite Article Four, Section 408.04, Page twenty-four of our zoning ordinance. Number two, the specific site is an appropriate location and adequate size for the use.
True, 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 true.
True. Okay, and there's a similar sign on the roof of the adjoining business. Number three, the use is developed, will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True, 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 true.
Okay, true, unanimous. It's in the industrial commercial zone. Number four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True, 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 true.
True, it does not block any traffic or vision. Number five, the use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities.
True, 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 true.
True. It's properly secured, it would not pose a problem. Number six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True, 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 true.
True. Okay, I think that it'll be an improvement, it will, it's an appropriate advertisement for the location of the business. So I would entertain a motion to?
I make motion to accept this variance as presented.
Approve.
Approve.
Especially.
Okay, it's a special exception, right? Or the motion is to approve the special exception? I'm sorry, who seconded?
Freeman.
Freeman, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
None.
Okay, so unanimous. Congratulations, make your new sign.
I will get your notice of decision out within five days, but Brian's aware of this. Did you submit your sign permit to him already, so that's kind of been a laura? Okay, so, he's right next to, I just knock on the wall, and he knows to go ahead and process it.
So I will wait to receive some sort of notice from him for this sign.
He'll be aware of it tomorrow, so, you know, I just need to actually execute paperwork, if you will, but since it's already in process, it's already here in the town hall. It'll go pretty speedy, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any unfinished business? Before? I don't believe so. We haven't met for a couple of months, so I don't know if anyone else is recalling something I'm not. I don't think we had any, 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 The deadline, the application deadline for the November meeting is October 25th because the November meeting date was changed to accommodate Election Day. So we rescheduled, it's on this thing, you guys all got a copy of that, we rescheduled the November meeting to Tuesday, November 20th. So there's 21 more days in which to receive an application, so the answer to your question is I don't have. We're going, but we, yeah, Don picked up on that.
Right, and thank you for mentioning that, Howard, so, because I was on Channel Three, we can let people know that the zoning board meeting for November will be November 20th because the first Tuesday is Election Day. So our zoning board meeting will be November 20th at 7:00 p.m. Right now, we have no applications. So is there anything communications or any other business? You have a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Okay, Freeman?
Second thought?
Howard? All right. Thank you.